701, call meeting to order. Would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As record show, all board members are present. Mr. Board, has public notice been given?
Yes, it has.
On to public comments. For policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the Richland School District, the parent or legal guardian of an enrolled district student, or the enrolled district student. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. Mrs. Steele?
None.
On to reports. District Administrator's report.
Okay, three things to share with the board and the public for tonight. One, and I'm sure Chair from the Building and Property will go into more in-depth about the entire agenda from VPT last Wednesday, but specifically, one of the things I wanted to share was, the Buildings and Property Committee reviewed 14 different scopes for the referendum project. This was included in bid package number one. There were 14 different scopes. Forty-three bids were received. And, little background information, we were expecting, or we have, about $981,000 in savings from the high school roof project. There was a $1.5 million allocated. Didn't reach that number, so we have about $981,000 in savings from the roof. We also knew that with the scope of work going to be done at the primary school, specifically as it related to these 5K sinking classrooms, if you remember, we originally thought there were two classrooms that were sinking. That scope essentially doubled. All four of them need work on them. The scope of that work is to tear down walls. I mentioned at the last board meeting that we are going to try to come up with a plan internally, and what we're going to do with those four classrooms for the start of school next fall. We're hoping that they're done, but we need to plan for the worst. Bring those two things together, because of that increase in scope, we were expecting bids that could be as high as $1.5 million over budget, knowing that we had roughly a million in savings. The board was going to have to make some decisions on what to do if it came in a half-million dollars over. I'm happy to report that our actual numbers for the primary school were only $435,000 over budget. So, we will be dipping into the savings from the roof savings. We have not touched our contingency. And one of the biggest unknowns in this entire project, which is shoring up that southwest corner of the primary school, will be taken care of. So, that's where we're at. At the December 9th, we've got an agenda item on for referendum update. At that time, we'll have all of the bids for you, those that were chosen, those that weren't, as well as a little bit more in-depth information on that. But I did want to share that information, that we are over, but we're not over nearly what we thought it could be, and that that will be covered by the roof savings. Second thing that I want to point out is a reminder again, that State Convention, held by WASB, held in Milwaukee, is January 21st through the 24th. We would invite and encourage all board members to attend if they are able to. We do need a WASB delegate. The board elected Mrs. Dickman to be our delegate at the State Convention, with Ms. Troxell as the alternate. If neither of you two can make it, then the board will have to select another alternate to represent the Richland School District at the delegate assembly. I would ask all board members to let myself or Mrs. Steele know that the final deadline would be by the end of the night on December 9th, which will be our next board meeting. So anytime between now and when you leave on December 9th, please let us know your availability to attend any or all of the State Convention. Again, we would be leaving the afternoon of the 21st and get back early afternoon on Friday, the 24th. And then finally, you may have noticed some new signage coming up Hive Drive. That signage that is on the back of the softball scoreboard, I think it looks fantastic. Just so the board knows, that is not referendum. That's actually a project that has been going on for about two and a half years. Those were funds that were budgeted for in the 22-23 school year and have been transferred forward through a signed fund balance for the last couple of years. We've still got a couple of projects that we're trying to get completed regarding signage. There's some lettering that will go on the sides of the buildings at the primary school and the intermediate school. One of those could happen as early as next week. Hope to be completed here in the next couple of weeks. And then we've got some of the interior signage at all three buildings, that there's some things that need to be tweaked there as well. So again, just wanted to make the board aware that it's up. If you saw it on the way in, that is not referendum. That's actually been something that's been planned for the last several years. Any questions from the board on any of those topics? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Board member reports. The Buildings, Property and Transportation met Wednesday, November 20th at 6:00 p.m. A few of the items, and I'll allude to them as I go, needed to be rescheduled due to some time constraints. Number one was the referendum bid package number one, as Mr. Board had stated. And just so that everybody was aware, us as a committee, we were in unanimous consent to move these to the next level. And to be fiscal stewards of the community's dollars, we definitely took each of the lowest bids. All of the companies were recommended by Nexus. They have done work with them, and they come highly, highly recommended. Item number two is rescheduled, as well as three, which was referendum projects, insurance audit update. The next thing we covered was advertising guidelines with policy 9700.01, advertising and commercial activities. It's something that we'll see at a future board meeting, but we were in unanimous consent. And this would essentially allow for signage to be placed on the baseball/softball fields. Ms. Laura Selgaby would be the point of contact for those interested folks in the future. Number five was purveyor bid timelines and specs, which is the food supply source. Number six is an action item tonight, which is a custodian staffing change due to changes in personnel. I think it's extending 55 days of full-time staff, if I'm not mistaken. Items number seven and eight, capital improvement, 10-year plan review, and 24-25 scheduling plans were rescheduled for later. Next, curriculum assessment, public relations met, also on November 20th at 7:30. Item number one is an action item tonight, which is the Spanish and Science Club trip. The request is that we waive policy 5851 for a trip to Puerto Rico that is self-funded by each of the students through fundraising efforts. And that is an action item. Again, that was unanimous consent to move forward. Item number two has been rescheduled, which is the 25-26 course description guides. Item number three, an ACT 20 update. Mrs. Johnson, can you remind me what ACT 20 was?
It's the legislature's reading thing that they're doing, where they're having a bunch of new requirements.
Okay. Item number four, goals and priorities, we cover each time. Nothing new to report at the moment. And item number five was our 24-25 scheduling plans. And that is all.
The Richland School District Foundation met on November 18th at a guidance report that was mostly revolving around the scholarships. Coming up, the district website does have the scholarship application live on there. They would be doing workshops to help the seniors fill out those applications. We also had Ms. Niemeyer came in and did a recap of the musical Grease. There were over 1,200 people in attendance in the course of the three performances. Wonderful show. Kids did a wonderful job, so they are to be commended for that. We also talked about the, our 23, 2023 taxes have been filed, and there's, we're looking at changing how those are being done in the future. That will be for a future date. We also talked about the Richland School District Foundation logo and letterhead that has been approved and will be going to print soon. There's also the outstanding alumni discussion with how we're going to redo the space over in the West Commons and how we're going to change that moving forward. And then, the Personnel and Negotiations Committee met on Wednesday, November 20th. Again, the custodial staffing changes were presented at the Personnel Committee, and that will be acted on tonight. Mr. Hunter, we've already discussed that. There was an hourly employee group, wage comparison, looking at other schools in the area, and then also the Department of Wage and Development, to see how we're doing compared to others in the area, and how we're paying our hourly staff. And we are, with the changes that we had with the ESTRA funds and then with the referendum, we are very competitive on that, which is wonderful to hear. I know that we were behind a little bit on the pay scale, but that has been moved forward and doing very well. When we have open positions, we are now getting multiple applications, whereas before, we were struggling to get any applications. Couple of the most recent ones had 20 or 30 applicants, so we actually have a pool of people to be able to choose from. We also discussed the Employee Wellness Program, that is the insurance portion of it, where there's an opportunity for the faculty and staff to earn an additional 3% benefit by hitting circumventure acts within the insurance wellness program. And then we also discussed the scheduling clients, and we then went into a closed session to discuss some employee compensation. Then the Policy Committee also met on Wednesday, November 20th, and it was essentially solely surrounding the naming policies, naming rates policies for our buildings, baseball fields, fieldhouse floors, whatever the case might be. We have a lot of work still to do on that, and so that is going to be a work in progress for a few meetings. And then we also went through our scheduling clients, and naming rates will be coming back again in December.
Is there a motion to approve prior meeting minutes of November 11th, 2024?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
I can second.
Second by Mrs. Dickman. Discussion. Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 On to financial items, approval of statement of cash and invoices.
I move we approve the statement of cash dated November 18th, 2024, and approve Community First Bank General Checking Accounts checks number 86805 through 86832, ACH number 242502 248 through 242502323, and voided ACH number 242502209 for a net total of $239,503.28. This is for the purpose of general operating cost of the district.
Motion was made by Mr. Dowdman. Second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hunter. Mr. Bowser, anything you want to add?
Nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Discussion. Mr. Van Landy.
Aye.
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 On to consent agenda items. Mrs. Steele?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented, and motion to approve the donation of the 1998 Yamaha XP250 Route 66 motorcycle valued approximately $2,500 from Emily and Alex Dolan. And that is it.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Van Landy. I'll second it. Discussion. Mr. Dowdman?
Aye.
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 On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank Emily and Alex Dolan for their generous donation. Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Troxell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Dowdman. Mr. Hunter?
Aye.
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 On to information and discussion items, district transfers and vacancies.
So the vacancies and appointments are in your memo. Again, there are six that we currently have open. Building Administrative Assistant at the primary school, that's in the interview process. District Driver, and a District Transportation Assistant, those are both also in the interview process right now. And then three positions that are currently reviewing applications and will be looking to interview, I believe possibly as soon as tomorrow or right after the holidays, and that's a custodian, six-and-a-half-hour position, as well as two special education aides, both at the intermediate school for seven-hour positions. Any questions from the board? Thank you.
The 9B seclusion and restraint report.
Okay, so this is a mandatory report that comes to the board annually, and I think, Mr. Joe Sem, if you're okay, if you'd like to give just a quick...
Yeah, again, this is like Mr. Board said, this is something that we have to report to the board every year, along with submitting a report to DPI, so...
Would you also please hit your microphone there? I'm sorry.
Yep, sorry. So again, this is a report that we have to present to the board annually, and that also goes to DPI. The last paragraph there, where we talk about the number of seclusion and restraints, that is an uptick from last year, primarily at the primary building.
Any questions from the board? It's one of those mandatory things, but I want to make sure that the board's aware. Thank you. Mr. Joe Sem?
9C, Q on discipline report?
Okay, so this is the first time you have seen this during the 24-25 school year. Those of you who have been on the board have seen it before. I guess everybody would have seen fourth quarter discipline report. At the end of each quarter, we compile the data for the 36, 37 different offenses that we have in our Skyward system. And any disciplines that get recorded in Skyward are included in the numbers that you see. In the memo itself, you'll also see a small chart there that lists the number of occurrences and the number of unique students that are affected. For instance, you can have one student create the same number, or create multiple offenses, okay? And so, when you see a high number of occurrences but a low number of students, that would typically indicate that there are a few students that are causing a lot of the problems in that particular area. When I say problems, I'm talking disciplinary issues. I will make the board aware that this information was updated today. There was some wrong information that I had uploaded into the board book initially, and so I want to make sure that if you looked at it over the weekend, some of the information has changed, including the attachments, but it is all up to date right now. Then if you scroll down in your memo, the chart, the total number of offenses, again, you'll see the blue from 21-22, orange, 22-23, green, last year, and then the gold will be for this year. Of course, we only have the quarter one data. Quarter one does show a higher number of offenses, that's actual data. However, again, I think that we are doing a much better job of reporting all instances and getting it into our Skyward data. And so while there certainly is potential for some, an uptick in actual discipline issues going on, some of it is also us getting better at making sure that all of our data is accurate. So just be aware of that as well. And then again, there are two PDFs at the bottom. One is the entire disciplinary data. That's the PDF on the right that outlines all, again, I think there's 36 or 37 different offenses that can occur, and then a breakdown by grade. Again, there's just one column for each grade right now, and that's the quarter one data. And of course, the total would be the same as we get more data for future quarters that will get filled in. And then the other PDF is, each of those 36 or 37 offenses, there is, how does this quarter relate to previous year's quarter ones? And so you'll be able to see some different trend lines as we start to get more and more data into these quarters. And the last thing that I would add before I turn it over to Building Principals, starting with the high school, is that there are some, and I've got it updated there, it's the very, very last item, it's in blue, it's underneath the total offenses chart. There are about five different offenses that we added at the start of this school year, okay? Those are threats to individuals, biting, spitting, and assault psychological. We had assault personal and physical and assault psychological combined into one, we've now broke those out. So when you look at those four specific instances, you're not going to see any data from 22-23, 21-22, and 23-24. Those will all be zeros because we didn't have those offenses. Doesn't mean that they didn't occur, it means that they would have been included somewhere else in the charts, okay? All right, with that, high school, if you want to just share a couple of things that you've seen or noticed this first quarter?
Yep. So, high school, I know Mr. Board talked about increased overall discipline, and a lot of that is positive with inputting. What we've seen in the high school a little bit for quarter one last year, from the 23-24 school year to this year, we had 215 referrals last quarter one, this year we're down to 173. Couple of reasons of why that may be. One is for our middle school students, we were in a block before, we went to an all-skinny format, so possibly of them sitting in one class for a short amount of time and moving into the class may contribute to that, as well as consistency amongst teachers and what's being handled inside the classroom on a teacher basis, and what's being sent to the office for the referral. We've worked a lot on that, we continue to do trainings on that during our PLC time. So we've seen much more consistent data from our staff members, as well as the most exciting piece of breakdown for the high school building is our vape offenses. So from our quarter one last school year, we were at 13 offenses for our vape usages in building, and that could be whatever type of substance, whether it's nicotine or THC, 13 total offenses last school year in quarter one. This, quarter one for this school year, we have four. So it's a dramatic drop-off, we're really excited about that, and that's due to, we believe, a lot of different reasons. The one big deterrent of bringing those substances into the building is our vape detectors that we have throughout the building. So we're excited about that, as well as the presence of Officer Wilson helping out with that. Some huge positives with our vaping offenses in high school. Positives as in negatives.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown, why don't you talk a little bit about the intermediate school, or what else? Mrs. Hardy, are you looking out for questions?
So our numbers are definitely up from last year, but I think that also comes across from using our above and below line behavior chart, which we're implementing in all of our buildings, so just be more consistent with that. Staff are well aware of what is and what is not acceptable, what they should be writing up for, and so just documenting more is the biggest thing. When looking at our data from this year compared to last year's defiance, so just more of that talking back, being disrespectful, that is definitely more elevated, but that is also, when we're looking at our above and below line, that's a lot of our behaviors we're coming at. So just doing a better job of documenting and really working with our students and also our staff of, hey, when you are feeling frustrated, what do we do? So instead of blowing up and being defiant, what can we do instead? And that is the second quarter. Now that students are well aware of above and below line behaviors, we've done, or we're doing, or have you heard the buzz cards? So it's just again, highlighting the positives that are going on with our students and how they're meeting those above and below line behaviors, and then going from there. So I'm hoping that recognizing the good will kind of step back from some of those, just maybe more ones that we could avoid with our students. Along with that, we've had, again, pro and a con, we've had more of our students, last year, we've worked on students being able to report if bullying was going on. And so, our students are continuing to do that this year, and are really coming forward and filling out our forms or letting somebody know. So that's a huge positive, so we've seen maybe a little bit more reporting when it comes to that, but that's also credit to our students and knowing that they feel comfortable to report when something is going on. So we're keeping an eye on that, and just continuing to work with our students day in and day out of appropriate behaviors.
Mrs. Hardy?
At the primary school, some of our areas, some of our areas are elevated as far as the physical with pushing other students or and/or pushing staff, so we are working on that each day. I am happy to say that our decrease is in area of threats, that is down for first quarter, so that is a celebration. As Mrs. Brown mentioned, using the love and logic, above the line, below the line, last year was the first year that we rolled that out, and that continues to be daily conversation tied into just about every piece of our day, along with the Hornet Way. A hard part for many of our young friends also is outside at playground time, just because it is a little more unstructured, and for some of our friends, just getting in line and not having their hands on their neighbor is a hard one, whether that's the impulse control, learning proximity and spatial awareness, all of those are important things that we are teaching and continuing to work on with the young children. So, a lot of social skills are happening, that's part of what we're using this year, our socially-emotional learning time, and teaching those social skills and focusing either as a building on a focus, or within classrooms if the teachers are seeing students in their rooms struggling with specific things.
Okay, thank you. What questions do board members have for our admin?
The one question I have is the staff training aspect of, you mentioned that getting more consistent, is some of that training time happening during Wednesday and PLC times dedicated specifically for that three buildings?
Yeah, we kind of have a rotational system for our PLC time and what, how often building training it is, and what other PLC work we're doing during those Wednesdays, but our most recent building training day, we did do, we focused heavy on discipline consistency amongst all teachers in the building and all staff in the building. We sent, Ms. Perkins and I, sent teachers and staff with a whole bunch of scenarios and how you would address that. And then we came back as a group and talked about what everyone thought. And for the most part, and some of them are layups, right? It's the easy ones that everyone knows, or most people know, and it's a good refresher reminder, and some of them are the more complex, let's dive into this, and how would we handle this? Sometimes there's multiple different answers for those unique ones, but were to continue to do stuff like that, we felt like it was beneficial to our staff and us, just hearing their thoughts, and so it was good, and all get on the same page.
And also add that we've got any teacher that is in their first three years of teaching is attending the Richland Teacher Academy, where we're going through a lot of these classroom expectations and designing engaging lessons and those kinds of things as well.
Thank you.
I had a question slash comment, and I mean no disrespect, and it's not intended as a gotcha, but how many years would you say, would it be fair to say that our reporting is now on par year over year from a realistic? I understand that, hey, next year, we're working on more, but if each year it's a slight uptick, then I guess the statement I would make is, we should potentially do a deeper dive in the specific incidences that continue to climb, and maybe there are different mediation efforts or more strict punishments in certain categories to dissuade those particular things. I just know that it's good that we're reporting, but it seems as though each time there's a slight uptick, and so at what point are we all held accountable to be the standard of reporting, no matter what?
Yeah, I don't know that we'll ever be perfect. I think we're always working towards improving our data reporting, and I don't mean to imply... improving our data reporting, and I don't mean to imply that the only reason that our numbers are high is because of an increase in reporting, I just think that that is one of the factors, is we're trying to get everybody on the same page, and one of our goals is consistent discipline, so making sure that what's being reported as a seventh grader in the high school is also being reported as a third grader in the intermediate school, even if the consequences are a little different. So I think that's really the shift that we're trying to do administratively, but I think to your point, we've got to make sure that we're addressing where are we still seeing an increase in numbers, where are we still seeing issues in the classroom, and make sure that we're addressing those.
I had a question on the code of conduct handbook violations, what falls under that? With everything being listed out fairly clear, what would fall under that section?
Turn it over to any of the folks that put things under there, that's kind of our, anything that's not a thirty-five, but what?
It's exactly what it is.
Give an example.
Yeah, it's a catch-all, code of conduct would just be not appropriate behavior for a school setting, whether it's class, lunchroom, whatever, you know, if I take my milk carton at lunch and I pop it, right? That could be an example of, code of conduct is just not appropriate behavior for a school setting.
Mrs. Brown, do you have anything to add, and there's?
I was just trying to look at, like, who my kids were that, you know, something happened with on that, I was just going to look, but yeah, it'd be very similar, you know, it's not necessarily that verbal piece, it's just maybe they did something that was a poor choice, you know, some might be gum, you know, if we're not letting students have gum, and they've been told repeatedly they could go under there, is one example, I know off the top of my head, so.
That's why we're at two percent. Yeah.
I might question, and I'd just like to say thank you for that additional information that we got this month where we can see how many students are, I forget how that was listed, but how many students are?
Versus the number of occurrences?
Versus the number of occurrences, and if my math is correct, I think every single grade except first is falling between that two and three occurrences per student, if we're just looking at a straight average. So would you say that's accurate, principals, like, is it pretty much the same number of occurrences per student, or is it usually one or two students, very heavy, and then a couple kids here and there make a poor choice, learn from it, move on, they only have that one maybe? Does that make sense?
I would say it's probably, it's obviously a super fluid per-grade level, but I would say there are a few students that carry the number up every time, or just constant stuff, but there's definitely the, you know, a couple here, a couple there, for sure.
I would say, I actually pulled a different report because I wanted to see, I like to see the number of students in the different ones, and so when I looked at how many kids, I had fifty-six students that received discipline referrals, so of a hundred-and-thirty-five, there was fifty-six individual students, and so some of those, like I said, my defiance was a lot higher, while I have one student that has six to seven, six or seven, I have a couple of them that have six and seven, you know, defiance, so that's going to raise those a little bit.
And mine would be similar to Lisa's, like, in our building, we have two handfuls of students that have about five or more, five to ten, so that can quickly fluctuate your numbers at a grade level.
Just another thought, we talk about discipline, but what are we doing to promote the positives? Because a lot of times, you know, the discipline is, it's just like, we're always going to have that, that's never going to go away, but if we can change the mindset, the culture a little bit to have it be where they're striving to do good, we've had discussions on that with some of our problem children, that when they are doing well, they get excited about it. So are there programs or there pieces in place that we can maybe shift that mindset to, I'm trying to not get in trouble versus I'm getting in trouble all the time?
So at the primary school, we do continue to do the Hornet Way, that's been around for quite a while, where students can earn coupons when they're caught being good or they're noticed, you know, going above and beyond, or if somebody's asking for an extra hand and they're right there, then they're being recognized for that effort and following, being respectful, responsible, safe, and a friend. The other thing that we started last year during second semester was monthly Happy Hornet events is what we call them, and that's for students that have less than two office discipline referrals, because we don't, I mean, they're children, and they're human, and there's going to be mistakes, and there's going to be learning opportunities awaiting for them, and then we want to be able to guide them, but we certainly want to celebrate the many, many students that are excelling every day in their behavior and their choices. And so that's something that does happen every month. It's special and neat. And then for the students that might have two or more office discipline referrals, then they are also reviewing the Hornet Way expectations or practicing, you know, what does this look like when you're making those above-the-line choices?
Thank you.
Similar, so we have Have You Heard the Buzz, and so I read those in the morning, and then we have a weekly drawing and then a monthly drawing for students to recognize the good things that are going on. Along with that, I hopefully know sixth grade parents or, you know, students are watching the school board meeting, but tomorrow our sixth grade staff are surprising those that have above-line behaviors, so looking at attendance and discipline with a fun activity. And then another thing, I was just thinking of a young man we have in our building who struggled starting the year September, October, and so we worked on setting up a behavior plan for him, so our school counselor, she does a lot of individual behavior plans with our students who are really finding they're struggling, and it's as simple as earning a piece of gum that they get after doing something ten times positive, and they're really excited. So we've been really trying to individualize some of those kids that aren't special ed, that are more like our alt-ed, just need a little extra. So we've been trying to do that and really now focusing on those students that are doing well, so it's kind of a work in progress, probably a little bit of what's going on in each building is happening.
At the high school level, we have incentive days for our middle school students every quarter, so if they are doing well in their classes, if they're doing well with behaviors, they get, I think quarter one, we had an open gym time for our middle school students. We also have quarterly awards assemblies, and we try to ask teachers not to just give us the academic awards, don't just give us the, you know, the sports awards, but make a unique award for your class to really, to point out a kid that you've noticed has been working hard. And then on the days when we don't have students here, we try to talk about, like, hey, have you noticed this student hasn't been here as much, let's make a phone call home, an email home, just to make that contact to say we noticed that they're doing much better, and just to have the good conversation with the parent.
Thank you.
For students that are acting up multiple times, when you call the parents, do you find parental involvement helps to improve this? I mean, is there a good relationship, or I suppose it depends on the family?
I feel like year two for us, we've developed more relationships with the parents, so they're trusting us, that we have the best interest for their child, and some of them are, they're went to and to and just need advice, so just having those conversations of, you know, what do I do, and offering some advice the best that we can, and just reminding them that we're here to support them, and that's why we're making the call, we need to let them know what's going on.
So I think parental involvement is extremely important with this, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Nine D class sizes and under-enrolled courses for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five?
Okay, so this is from policy twenty-three, twelve, and every year the board looks at teacher-to-student ratios, class sizes, as well as under-enrolled courses. Under-enrolled courses at the, at the high school level would be those courses that have ten or fewer students in them. Some of them are self-explanatory, they're special education class or those kinds of things, others are not. And so the board is kind of getting this information in the end of November, because in the coming months, they will be seeing more about the twenty-five, twenty-six, staffing plans, budget, those kinds of things. And if the board is ever interested in needing to make a cut, okay, or we just find that this is getting too low of a ratio or too high of a ratio where we need to shift positions around, this is kind of the first piece in that planning stage, okay? So you'll see a table there, starting with the early childhood, their class sizes, scrolling all the way down through our special education, their caseloads, title, and then the intermediate school, third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade, as well as the same ELL, spec ed, and title as well. And then there's a PDF that shows all of the grades seven through twelve, and the staff member, and the four different quarters for the school year, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, the number of students that they've got in each of their sections, okay, of different courses. So, again, it's a lot of information, a lot to take in, but it really is there for the board to see, some of the course sizes, small or large, that are being offered, and then again, at the bottom of that is the under-enrolled courses for quarter one as well as quarter two here at the high school, and maybe some additional information that pertains to it. So, no specific things that the board needs to do, other than review it and see if you have any questions. Again, we've got all of our admin here that may be able to answer any questions that you may have. We have a lot of information and something the board's seen before, and will continue to see annually.
Just seeing that a lot of the reasons behind it are offered during other elective classes, obviously all of them are going to have that, so are we looking at other information that is maybe a lot more specific than that, that it's, you know, it's butting up against this graduation-required course, and maybe should we need to shift?
Yeah, specifically, we noticed our middle school has a lot of elective choices, so we've been meeting with the CTE team of how do we make sure that our middle school students get to dabble in a little bit of everything before high school? So we actually just met with them last week during PLC time, just to talk about, you know, for instance, like yearbook seven and eight, we can have seventh and eighth graders in that so they can experience that, so maybe we can do that more with some of our electives so that they can take it, just if there's another course they need, but they have another opportunity, whether they're a seventh or eighth grader, can take that at any time. So we're starting to work on the schedule for next year already and plug some of that in to see if that will help. And then just meeting with our counselors, because they know, they know this would need to appear, and this would be more helpful to make sure all of our students get it. Another thing to point out, the AP seminar and AP research, that's taught by one teacher, so the nine students and the two students are actually in one room at the same time, and that teacher's able to teach both of those classes, so that's why it works out to have the two in there.
Answer your questions, Mr. Board?
Nine E, the DPI district report card?
Okay, so Dr. Sherri Johnson will be giving a little presentation on the district report card. The DPI recently released the district report cards for all districts in the state of Wisconsin, that became public at the beginning of last week, the nineteenth, I think, was the day, but we probably have that date on. The presentation has been uploaded prior to today's meeting, again, if you looked at it over the weekend, it was not in there, but Dr. Johnson will have it here on the big screen, as well as a slide deck for you and/or the public to reference as well. So with that, Dr. Johnson, take it away.
Sure. So if you'll notice that the blue words are, so if you want to look at the district card, you can go there. If you want to go to the DPI website and look at every school district's report card, you can, and actually, within that website, it'll break it down by building even, so I suggest you go if you're curious. It's a lot of information, but really good information. So I wanted to show you our own data year over year. So the first column, the district column, you'll see our score as a district is at a seventy-two, which is now a four-star school district, and years prior are below it. And then the columns to the right, we've got the high school has grown from a sixty-four point eight to a seventy point one, and we have the intermediate building that grew from a seventy-three point nine to a seventy-seven. Now you'll see three other columns to the right, and the reason I'm pointing these out and why we included them is that you should know, Partner School and the ROA, which stands for the Richland Online Academy, both have small enough numbers that could be identifiable for students, so they don't, they don't create a report card for them individually, because if they showed a certain percentage is economically disadvantaged, or they might be a different, or a certain kind of learner, it might be identified, and we don't want that for them. So essentially, they are an NA, we meet, is what they consider that as. They, I actually fill out a document that, that tells them what we worked on, the goals we have for those buildings, and so we meet. The Richland Primary School is not also scored because they don't have any assessment age groups there, so we start state assessments at third grade, so that's why it's not also getting a grade. So there's priority areas that they weigh this on, so it's kind of funny, we've been attending some OSO trainings that you and Mr. Board have been supporting us in getting more training, and there's a presenter we've been seeing recently who always says, don't do public math. And so this is us doing public math. Essentially, what they do in the different areas of the report card all vary, so there is no one equation or one way to get this information. So essentially, in this particular area, it's showing you that we have, it's got the pie graph showing that there's two quarters that are equal, which is the on-track to graduate and the target group outcomes, they weigh those evenly, but we have a large amount in growth weighed because we have such a high amount of economically disadvantaged students. School districts that don't have so much, then their achievement is higher than their growth. So our priority area, the first one is achievement. Now you'll see the purple bar is our score, and the gray bar is the state's score, so it's showing you that comparison. Now this is a three-year average of data, so this isn't just last year's, this is prior years. Now keep in mind, this is only the third year that this framework has been in place, so kind of what you were talking about, Neil, with, you know, getting good data, having things lined up year over year, same with this state, it just doesn't always happen that way. So this is the third year, so we're hopeful that this data will stay consistent moving forward. So essentially, they give points for students who score at certain levels on some of the assessments, and that's how we get the score that we have. Now, something to also keep in mind is our participation as a district in the last three years on average hasn't been at the ninety-fifth percentile. The last two years it has been, so I'm hoping next year we'll even see a bump up in our achievement scores because our, we'll have the right number of students or more actually testing. Because imagine if we have, you know, eighty percent of our students testing and they're figuring it at a hundred percent, it's going to show a lower average, so it's really important for us to get as many students tested as possible. So for growth, this area shows, our bars are the blue and the states are the gray. Now, this is a really interesting area because this priority area focuses on the pace of improvement, and their students' improvement over time, and they're comparing them to similar, similar schools across the state. So it's not like this is us versus the state apples to apples, this is very much them trying to match, match us up with other districts similar to ours. I don't even know who those schools are to be able to figure out what it is, but I'm happy about this, because this is telling us that our students are growing at a higher rate than most districts like ours, so this is a good thing. The target group outcomes, so essentially, this is like a report card for the students in the, below the twenty-fifth percentile, so they take the students who scored the lowest, and they, they compare them to other schools. So it's showing that our students at, in achievement, they got a fifteen, but the growth was a seventy-nine point three. That's a huge, huge thing for us, because yes, maybe students are scoring lower in the twenty-fifth percentile or below, but they're growing at a faster rate, so that means eventually we're going to, we're going to get there. You can't catch up unless you grow extra, so if we are below grade level, we have to grow more than just a grade level. And these are the priority areas for the target group, so that bottom twenty, below the twenty-fifth percentile, it's showing you according to, this is our own kind of comparison, it's the, the students that are not in the, below the twenty-fifth percentile versus the students who are. So the students in the green are the students in, below the twenty-fifth percentile, and so this is just our students versus our students, it's just information for us to know. So on achievement, eighteen point seven. on achievement, 18.7 for our target group versus 65.8 who are scoring at proficient or advanced. And our growth, you see our growth group, they are growing significantly more than our students who are not in the target group. Our math at 11.3, but then their growth in math is the same as our not-target group. So we were looking at some of these scores. There's a, there's a chart that we look at. It has a line down the middle of the page, and everything scoring on the left side is minuses, meaning we went down from last year, and everything on the right side is showing pluses. We had all pluses except for one, and it was students with disabilities in math. So it helps us kind of focus our areas and what we need to work on. Something else to look at is chronic absenteeism. One, one video I was watching it with the DPI, they suggested that the one thing that we, that could really impact all of this, impact everybody's report card, is getting kids to attend school. Chronic absenteeism is a big deal, and this is an average still. This isn't just this last year's information. So it's going to, COVID's going to impact us for a few more years until we can get those years to fall off of our averages. But even now, it's not COVID, but we still see chronic absenteeism. So it's really important that we meet the needs of our students and find ways to get them connected. And then on-track to graduate. Again, you see chronic absenteeism. Again, that's why they say it's so important. It's weighed in two of those areas. So they're considered chronically absent if they've missed more than 10% of the days of school. And that's something we're actually looking at as an administrative team, like how to, how do school districts figure absences? And what, is it a full day? Is it one period? Is it 15 minutes? What is it? So we've been working through our process with Sean and some people from CISA, trying to make sure that we are consistent so that we are being able to compare our data to the other district's data. So, and this is, as you see, it's even a year delayed more so. So this is 22, 23 data, but I thought it was interesting to look at that we have 29.6% of our students successfully complete at least one advanced course we're having in the state. Dual enrollment. So this is one that I, I keep bringing up to our counselors. We're looking at data. We think maybe our Skyward information isn't proper because we know students are getting dual enrollment. So that's something we have, we've been looking into. Industry-recognized credentials, our CTE department is working on this, and, and work-based learning. We are way above the state average on that one. And then arts is also important. So we have a higher percentage involved. In arts, we have, we don't have dance offered here, but a large percentage in music and a higher percentage in theater. Some of, oh, I don't know why that didn't translate. Some of you may have noticed some of these. We would be number three, as you can see, in the conference as a district. This is just a ranking, sorry. So number one was River Valley, if I remember. What's that? Oh, do they? Okay. Oh, thanks. Perfect. This just kind of gives you the top six from our, our conference, our sports conference. You noticed that some of this was moving around on social media recently. So this is us as a district. And then this is compared to several of our, our area school districts. So we are actually second out of those 10, which are our area ones. And then this is high schools. We're second in the high schools for our conference. And we are first in our local high schools. And I also had the intermediate on there, too. I'm not sure where that went. There it is. Elementary, we're third. 89.4, they have a five-star school at Platteville. So we're going to be calling. We've been actually reaching out to discuss some of these things with them, find out what things they're doing. And then in our local area, we are, we are number one. So it's a, it's a time to celebrate our growth. Two years ago, we were 32 out of 32. And last year, we were 16th, and now this year, we're ninth out of all the CISA schools. That's huge growth, huge growth. That starts here. Your guidance, your support, we really appreciate you, and we can't do this without the work that you do. So this is, this is a testament to you. It's a testament to our, our leaders. It's a testament to our staff and our students and families. It's just, it's really great to see it. Things are moving in the right direction, and this is a symptom of that. This is showing that that's, that's what's happening. So congratulations. Does anybody have any questions?
Congrats to you as well, Dr. Johnson. I know this is a PAP project, so to speak, and so to pull it up.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
I guess the easiest question to ask maybe is what else do we need? Obviously, we're growing and we're doing great things, but what else do we need to, the growth in, in the biggest area of improvement to, to help move things forward?
You know, I think we have a lot of really great things in place. I might put a pin in that because that might come back around. But I really feel like we are, we are doing, we are moving a lot of things forward all at once. And so there's going to be, you know, I'm, just, just to warn you a little bit, when you adopt a new curriculum, like elementary reading and math, especially in the same year, we might see a little drop. That tends to happen when you adopt a new resource. So I hope it doesn't impact this too much, but I just want you to be aware. But you've done a lot, and we are working hard. I guess I would like maybe 28 hours in a day. Or maybe, you know, 55 weeks a year, something like that, like a little more time, like a little more time with students and that type of thing. But I'll let you know, let me think on that.
One comment. Now, you've shown several graphs here where we're considered doing quite well. And Ithaca is generally behind us somewhere. And in one of the graphs that we had where students transfer out, most of them are going to Ithaca, it seems. So we're losing them and they're gaining them, and yet we're doing much better than they. So maybe we'll regain some of the students we've lost once these numbers get out.
That could very possibly be exciting to think about, isn't it?
Dr. Johnson, just in summary, I know we had the stars up there, but if you could just clarify, as a district, two years ago, DPI listed us as a district as below expectations.
Yes, two years ago, yeah.
Last year's report card, we met expectations, and this year, we classify it as exceeds expectations?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Good stuff. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. 9F, SWC Conference Realignment Plan to WIAA.
Okay, so I'll probably need Ms. Selgaby's assistance on this. Essentially, this is for information. This will be coming back to the board in December. Laura, for Action?
As is, correct.
As it sits, yep. So the conference is, our conference, Dodgeville, Lancaster, Platteville, Prairie de Sheen, Richland Center, and River Valley, they have been meeting. And outside of football, which the WA has created its own football-specific conference, one of the things that our conference schools have noticed with only six teams is it's very problematic to schedule and have non-conference games because of the number of non-conference games that are needed when you're only playing 10 conference games in a sport like basketball. When you're allowed 24 and you're only pre-scheduling 10, this is one of the problems that is happening. And so this is happening around the state. But one of the things that WA has said is that if you are coming up with a plan, you also have to have a plan for everybody else that's affected in that plan. So you'll see in the chart that is being presented, the SWC and the SWAL are kind of working on merging to some degree. That is shown in the orange there. Those are 10 schools that will be listed. But that has a ripple effect on other conferences. And so in the green, you'll see the Six Rivers East, which includes some of the SWAL schools like Iowa Grant. Six Rivers West also has a trickle-down effect to include schools like Southwestern. And then the Ridgeon Valley, some of those Six Rivers schools may be getting pushed, as well as basketball included in there. So that's the proposal. Ms. Selgaby, help me out here. What is the ask? And what is the, any other information that we're looking at?
Yep. I think you hit everything. What kind of spearheaded a couple of the conference ADs to move forward and try to create this, and as you'll read on the top, was for a lot of the SWC schools, especially the southern ones, they always play a lot of Six Rivers schools. And they, at the end of '23, I believe it was, went to a super conference model, where they're now playing 18 conference games. So in basketball season where we need 24, and we used to rely on them heavily to help for proximity of travel and things like that, you know, they only have six available days now. And baseball and softball is similar. You can schedule 26 contests in those, and we attend. So we're searching, and it's higher travel costs, it's a lot of these smaller Six Rivers schools and SWAL schools, our schools we've played, I've been here 30-plus years. Every time, every year I've been here, these are the schools we've been playing historically. And now we're not able to. So now we're having to go north, or we're having to go to La Crosse, having to go to the Madison area. It's just a lot more travel for our kids. It's more time out of class, getting home later at night, obviously more expense the further we're having to travel. So as a conference, Joey and Jamie just kind of sat down and put their heads together and came up with a plan, brought it to us a few times. They have met with the SWAL athletic directors just to tell them this is the proposal we're looking at and working on and hoping to move forward with. They asked that we get approval from our boards before they actually officially send it in. So this is kind of the first thing, time you've seen it, and I'm hoping to get a vote on the 9th. So at our meeting on, I believe that the 12th, we'll be able to have all schools in agreement that we can go ahead and move forward with it. I believe the earliest, don't quote me on this one, but I believe the earliest this would take effect is the school year 2930. That's how long of a process it is to change conferences.
And those problems that you brought up are not just at Richland Center. That's all. Everybody in our conference has those problems and solutions. Again, this is for information. Happy to answer any clarifying information that you have now. But otherwise, if you have questions that come up between now and the 9th, let me know so I can get them to Ms. Selgaby so that hopefully be that on the December, at this December 9th meeting, that the board can take formal action on endorsing this plan.
9G, School Board Member Elections, Spring 2025.
Okay, so you've heard me say district administrative reports. The elections are coming up. This is kind of the official agenda item to let everyone know this is, this is happening. Next spring, we will have two seats open. We have the Area 2 West seat. Area 2 West consists of the Village of Boaz, as well as the Townships of Bloom, Sylvan, Marshall, Aiken, Dayton, Richwood, and Eagle. That is currently held by Aaron Unbyhan. And then we have Area 3, which is a city seat. And the city is anybody who lives in the city, the city of Richland Center. That is currently held by Mr. Huntimer. So those two seats are up for a spring election of 2025. You'll also see on the table, all the board members and when their terms and elections are up. And then you'll see two attachments. One is the board policy regarding the organization, as well as a PDF of the schedule and some specific dates. I'm just going to point out a couple of them. One, specifically for Mr. Huntimer and Mr. Unbyhan, if you are not running in the spring election, then you should declare, you should file a declaration of non-candidacy form no later than 5:00 PM on December 27th. That gives us ample time to notify the media of those incumbents who are not running. And then for anyone, the two of you and/or anyone in the public who is looking to run, they must have their paperwork submitted no later than 5:00 PM on January 7th. And then they can pick up any paperwork from the district office. They can contact myself or Ms. Steele if they have any specific questions on that process. If there are three or more individuals for any one seat, okay, so if there are three people for the Area 2 West or three people for the city, then we would have a primary election on February 18th. And if there is not, then we would have an April 1st election, spring election. Okay? That's a, that's a high-level overview, but again, happy to answer any questions that you might have. Okay, thank you.
92, Action Items, 10A, 2025, 26, and 2026, 27 District Calendars.
Okay, so trying to get back into a routine where the district is, the board is approving two district calendars at a time. If you remember last year, this concept of PLC time for Wednesdays, which resulted in an early out, a one-hour early out every Wednesday. The board only approved one year, this '24, '25 school year, so that we could see how it worked, how it impacted families, those kinds of things. As you saw in the district report card, the things that we're trying to do from a curriculum improvement standpoint are definitely paying off. They're definitely impacting our scores in a positive way. The calendar is a huge part of that, allowing for this PLC, professional learning, community time on Wednesdays is huge as staff focus on student learning and how, how things we do in the classroom affect student learning. So both of these calendars, the '25, '26, as well as the '26, '27 school calendar, have that model in place, early outs on Wednesday, very similar to what we're currently doing. One of the things that was asked, or one of the goals that was tried to accomplish by our calendar committee was it would be really nice if we could get done by Memorial Day or in May without sacrificing spring break and some of the other things that we've grown accustomed to. And both of these two plans, both of these two draft calendars do accomplish that. '25, '26, for instance, as my blue circle is spinning and it's loading up here, gets done, cliffhanger. Come on. Somebody probably has it up already. Gets done on the May 29th, which is the Friday before Memorial Day. Graduation would be on the 31st. '26, '27 is similar. When you look at both of these calendars, just a couple of things to point out. There's no financial impact, right? We're not taking on a bunch of finances in order to make these calendars work. There's really no financial impact involved in the drafts that you're looking at. Both calendars meet the contracted number of days for, for teachers, 188. Both of those models meet this. One change from this year to next year will be that this year, our EC and 4K, they have a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday model with Fridays. Staff do not see students. They do their prep work as well as some community outreach. They would be moving to a Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday model. And Wednesday, the day that is an early release, that will be the day that they don't see students. We've already contacted Head Start, Early Head Start. They're on board with that plan and can accommodate those students on Wednesday instead of Friday. And then when you look at the draft calendars, last thing I would point out is that the surplus, the number of extra days that are built into the calendar in the lower left-hand corner. So when you look at the '25, '26, in the lower left-hand corner, you'll see that the high school will have a built-in 6.3 days for inclement weather and delays. Intermediate and primary school excluding 4K has almost seven. And then the 4K does have a surplus. They're not at a deficit, so they do not need to have any built-in days. But if there are inclement weather or delays on the Monday, Thursday model, they may have to use Wednesday as a, as a makeup day as the, as the school year. to use Wednesday as a makeup day as the school year goes on. I think I hit the highlights, but I'm going to ask Mr. Bosworth if there's anything I missed that you would like to point out before we have questions from the board.
Nothing to add.
Okay. So that's a proposal for drafting or approving the calendars for twenty-five, twenty-six and the twenty-six, twenty-seven as presented. And that is a recommendation from the curriculum committee as well. So I don't know if the curriculum committee, anything to add?
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the final draft calendars for the 2024, twenty-five, and 2026, twenty-seven? So vote. Motion made by Mr. Van Landy. Second, Ms. Troxel. Discussion.
The only point I'd like to make on calendars with early Wednesday delays is it is a struggle for some families, juggling either jobs or babysitters or whatever to get coverage for
Ms. Troxel?
Aye.
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 Ten B Spanish and Science Club trip to Puerto Rico.
Okay, so this is also coming in a recommendation from the curriculum committee. Our policy twenty-four thirty, which is district-sponsored trips, indicate that if a trip wants to be considered district-sponsored and they're going out of the country, it needs board approval. Technically, Puerto Rico is considered domestic travel. However, it's close enough that I thought that it should come to the board since we are traveling outside of the continental United States, as well as it would have needed to come to the board as a waiver of policy fifty-eight, fifty-one, school events on Wednesdays, Sundays, and holidays because it does cover at least a Wednesday and/or a Sunday. And so trying to tackle both of those at one time. That's what this agenda item is for. So again, unless the curriculum committee has something to add to it, Spanish Club and Science Club is looking to take a district-sponsored trip to Puerto Rico in June of 2026. That gives them ample time to know that it's approved and to do fundraising and
I guess the only clarification I'm really looking for is the triple lead between the days of June fourteenth to the eighteenth. Is that that range just because of not necessarily having specific travel dates chosen yet?
High school admin, I think you can probably answer that just.
Yeah, that's correct. Mrs. Mark specifically is working with the company and is kind of educating them on the whole trip and the adventure, and it's a window for price reasons, so they didn't want to lock down a specific date just because of travel to us.
Thank you.
How many students would go? I assume there's a
Cap.
Chaperone per student number.
We have a ratio and policy. I don't know exactly what it is. I want to say it's fifteen to one, but don't quote me on that. I can get that information if you'd like, but do we have a cap on the number, total number that could be offered? Funds are raised.
Was it brought up? What we have to ask, you can certainly find it up.
Do you think it would be more than three students, though?
Hard to tell.
You think we're able to take more than three, or do you think?
Just if there was enough interest in it, that it's going to be a successful, somewhat large group was all. Wishful thinking.
Do you have any indication as to how many members there are in each of these clubs?
Not specific. We always download our membership list into our Skyward database, but that has not been done yet for the year. I would say historically, you're going to get anywhere between a dozen and twenty-five.
Because with the Spanish Club and the Science Club, my thought is that there may be, you know, a number of students there that would like to do this and maybe a number that would not be able to. So I'm trying to figure out about, you know, what the numbers might be. But we've got time to figure this out still, right?
Yes, and they have opportunity to do fundraising as well.
But I think this is a good idea.
Just to clarify, Ms. Selgaby, when you say twelve to twenty-five per club or? Correct. Yeah, I would say it was twelve to twenty-five per group.
I think the first step is what they're looking for is approval. Yes, it's a district-sponsored event if it happens that it's district-sponsored. Obviously, there's a lot of unknowns as far as whether or not there's enough interest, they can raise the funds, et cetera, but they don't want to go out and try to raise funds and work with it if this hasn't been approved at this point. So we've had some that have happened and some that have fallen through. This is kind of the first step.
I have one more question. Being that this is after graduation of 2026, does that mean that the students who just completed their K through twelve education would not be capable of going on this two weeks later? Will it be only incoming for the following year?
Looks like, yeah, for the students in the classes of twenty-seven, graduating class of twenty-seven through 2030.
Sorry, these glasses don't work. Is there a motion then to approve the Spanish and Science Clubs to take a district-sponsored trip to Puerto Rico in June of 2026 as presented?
So vote. I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Huntimer, second, Ms. Van Landy. Discussion.
I would like to hear Mr. Huntimer say, I make that motion. Can you do that?
No, not necessarily. I don't want to show off. Public place, trying to be humble. Are you going to be a chaperone?
Mrs. Dickman.
Aye.
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 Ten C Custodial Staffing Change.
Okay, so back in 2022, we made, the board made a move to transition all of our, all with the exception of one, maintenance and custodial position from term and having to hire summer custodial help to just making them full-time positions. One member did not, one employee did not want that. They gave all the employees the option to having to go to that, and so we kept that in place as a term position until that individual retired, and that individual has such retired now. And so we're looking to make that final move to transition that last position from a term position to a full-year position. Going to come roughly at the cost of about eighty-five hundred dollars, and that is just something that Mr. Jones can absorb out of the maintenance and operation budget. So this will provide consistency, adding those additional fifty-five days to that position. Coming up, the recommendation from personnel negotiations and budget development, as well as the building's property and transportation.
This is the position that is currently open?
It is, and that's one of the reasons why we held off on interviews until this position happened, or this action took place, so we knew exactly what we were offering that person during the interview process.
How many applicants do you have thus far?
Do not know the answer to that.
All right. Is there a motion then to approve the transition of the last-term custodian position to a full-year custodian position?
I'll make that motion.
Mrs. Dickman, second, and Ms. Troxel. Aye.
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 Make the motion to move into closed session pursuant to understandings nineteen point eight-five-one, C and/or F is appropriate to consider employment promotion, compensation of employees. At the conclusion of the closed session, the board will entertain the motion to adjourn the meeting. There's a second? Second. Ms. Van Landy, discussion. Mr. Van Landy.
Aye.
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 Thank you.